Welcome to our study session. We don't do roll call sessions. Superintendent?
Yeah, I think we probably should.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do roll call. I'll start. Kim Dickerson, board member.
Brianna Dietrichson, board member.
Grant Ellon, board member.
Al Swann, superintendent.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Jay Colette, board member.
Jason Watt, business administrator.
Sorry, we're getting a little bit of a late start. We did a site tour and it was really good. So we'll go ahead and get started with our first item, Wasatch CAPS. And Parents Empowered Partnership was what the Wasatch County Health Department.
Behavioral Health.
Behavioral Health, yes.
I'm going to come up and stand up here and just, I just want to take a quick second to say that Wasatch High School is a Wasatch. I know that there are no town about it already. We have new faces. I just wanted to introduce the program. CAPS stands for Behavioral Studies. And we take students and hopefully turn them into young professionals where they meet with a real world client and do a real world project. And so, thank you for giving these kids, young professionals, we don't use kids, just a second to introduce their project and just let you know that Wasatch High School, you know, we love sending kids over there because we believe that they have all kinds of great education up until their junior and senior year. They have this opportunity to go out and do real things and it's been an amazing program. I've been involved with it. I'm going to ask Weston Broadbent, is this the eighth year?
We're in our ninth year.
So I was from the beginning, the first eight years and now they're on their ninth and they have done amazing things throughout the year. So thanks for taking the time to listen to these students and I'm going to let them introduce their project. Yeah?
As you introduce CAPS maybe for the first time for some, how many students are enrolled at CAPS?
So it varies, but we're in the neighborhood of Weston. Can you give me like 100?
Each semester 100 to 120.
120, so you have 240 throughout the year.
So the project we're seeing tonight is a representative of a much larger group and many projects going on all simultaneously.
And maybe more by way of introduction, we've got students go in national competitions with the projects they do or place in national competitions. There's students with patents. There's students that have products out in the real world, all as a result from projects such as the one you're about to hear about. So thank you for taking.
Give us just a little overview of the courses in CAPS.
Oh, sure. So we have, and actually this is a great example because this is a cross pollination of three courses, right? So there's Health and Medicine, that's the one that I was able to do for the last eight years. We have Innovate, which is a class where students can bring their business ideas and work on them. Business and Entrepreneurship, Digital Design and Media, Software Development, I'm saying the names wrong, Agriculture and Engineering. And so students get opportunities to do projects in these those realms. In this particular project, we take in three different groups, put them together and you can see that the work they've done has been very collaborative where they've all been able to work on their strengths to put together a really awesome project.
And tell them about the trips, the trip that you did.
So Mr. Broadbent goes on that trip and I'm not as well qualified, but they go out. Yeah, do you want to?
So we, each year we'll take some students and we started with our business course area. And so this was a vision of Tom Stone and he comes up and volunteers at CAPS and he wanted to have our students go and experience businesses, other CAPS students, something about our country or nation and then like something going on in that area. So we just went to Minneapolis last semester or last month and spent four days there meeting with other CAPS groups that are hopped out of the Twin Cities area, got a tour, like talked to the real estate professionals who run the Vikings. Anyway, got to see a ton of different businesses.
And who are some of the local businesses that you've worked with? I know Roomies is one of them.
Yeah, so at any given time, we probably have 50 or 60 projects, like every semester. And so it rotates like who we're working with, but there's a large percentage of our business population that we're doing projects with. But like ones that we consistently work with would be like Soldier Hollow, Myro Industries, Rooftop Anchor, Quenched, Wasatch Mountain State Park, anyway, you go down like the, Danny Labrum comes up like once a week and helps give advice to our students.
Kodiak Caves.
Kodiak Cave, yeah, there's a ton.
The DWR, the DNR.
DNR, DWR, yeah.
Yeah, those are huge.
And I just want to mention, the governor of our state really likes our CAPS program. He's been, he's been there a couple of times. I've heard him personally state that every senior in the state of Utah, he would only hope that every senior in the state of Utah could someday have a CAPS experience before they graduate.
Yeah. And so I, oh, go ahead.
How does a student get into CAPS? Do they apply? Is it a class they sign up for?
Yeah, so it's a class and so we're Wasatch High School employees and so it's a class and it takes two periods of their day. And so they have to be a junior or senior. It's held up at the UVU Wasatch campus and so we'll have to bring you all up and we can do a tour. But as you go, Wasatch High, Wasatch built out a space that was being used for storage up at the UVU campus. And so we go and just take, because we're on a block schedule, like A day, B day, we're the second half of one of the days for most of our students. And then we have a morning period for like 25 students.
So I know we're here for the presentation, but will we just quickly introduce Dr. Stevens?
Yes, this is Dr. Stevens. The reason CAPS even exists is because of the clients and mentors that are giving back, right? And so Dr. Stevens is a prime example. He was a neuro-interventionalist at the University of Utah. And then it's, we, some people say retired, but he rewired. And he heard about CAPS on the radio and has decided to just, he comes up literally every CAPS period and just helps out in our medicine and health area and just gives advice or has some projects that our students are working on and stuff.
He's incredible.
And maybe to sum it up, this is a chance to work on professional skills, right? We do all kinds of awesome things in the classroom at the high school, right? We have challenging courses, AP courses, concurrent enrollment courses all on down. But this is a place where they get to do some of the things that I certainly never did in high school and I had to learn the hard way in my first job when I went off to college and those things. So it's a really awesome sort of polishing experience in my opinion for these students to get ready for whatever is next, whether it be college, whether it be a career, whether it be starting their own business. It's a great, great program. Any other questions? Okay, students, I think it's your turn to come on up and tell us.
Thank you so much for presenting us.
And I think you can just say if you want.
Oh, I was just going to say.
Oh, you're saying. Again, shake their hands.
Hi, I'm Carla from Wasatch. Carla from Wasatch. Nice to meet you. Hi. Hi. Carla from Wasatch. Hello. Nice to meet you. Casey, Kason. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we're so excited to be here and we thank Mr. Sprawl for presenting us. We are currently working on the Wasatch Behavioral Health Public Service Announcement Campaign. I'm Carla Knobert from the Wasatch CAPS Health. This is Naomi Hobbie. She's from the Business and Marketing. And then this is Kason Ashworth and he's from Digital Media. Okay, the involvement, who is involved in the project? Well, we currently have Jared Hendry from the Wasatch Aquatic Center. He's the manager there. We also have Adra and Trudy. They're from Wasatch Behavioral Health. And then we have Kirsa Albert, which is the District Director of Communications. And then our CAPS team, of course, Kason, me and Naomi. And then we have R&amp;R Partners, which is an advertising company located in Salt Lake City. And then we are also funded by a grant from Parents Empowered, which is grant money set aside from alcohol sales in Utah. Okay, what are we working to accomplish? We are working to install underage drinking prevention accounts in the Wasatch Aquatic Center. As you can see below the pictures, on the left is the Wasatch Aquatic Center and on the right is previous installments that R&amp;R has done before. We're looking to go based off this theme of the spreading awareness of the dangers of alcohol and spark conversations between parents and kids.
This is sort of a rough draft timeline we created to help you visualize the milestones in the project. Everything that we're doing is working up to the installation date and our family kickoff event, which is on May 3rd. Next slide. So we decided this was important. We were researching our target audience and we decided to go with parents of kids from ages nine to 12. This is the age range that kids are developing their perceptions of alcohol. So that information coupled with this statistic from 2023 Wasatch County Sharp Survey data that we analyzed, basically it says that sixth graders reported over half of parents in our county do not communicate expectations of no alcohol use at least twice a year. So just all of this helped us decide that our main message was going to be the importance of setting boundaries with your kids. And all of our messages were using our research base through Parents Empowered.
Next slide. I love your quote there, be a parent first and a friend second.
Love it.
So these two photos are showing possible locations for PSAs to be put in. This is pool and the right is the competition, two main sections, Aquatic Center. And here are the bleachers where people will watch swim meets in the competition pool. So these two, these two locations are honestly the best in my opinion because people will be there. And then the design we decided to go for, so I made it for R&amp;R after our survey, people want a Heber Valley inspired theme. And we sent that survey out about two weeks ago. I think around 100 or so people.
Who did you survey?
The entire county.
Awesome.
Did you do it, how did you set the survey out?
So we had helps from Weston over here and then we also, our peers helped us put this survey out. And then Wasatch Behavioral Health with Adra, she helped us as well, like on the, this is on the Wasatch County School District page as well.
And we sent it out through the pool to all of our people that have passes. And on there it says 46%, which is what you'd think is not the majority, but there were four questions and the majority was 46%. And we are, I think we are planning to put in a Spanish translation because around the of Heber Valley is like, they speak Spanish. It'd be good to have a Spanish translation. And below is just a list of animals we were planning.
Riverhawks, yeah. For the new high school, we thought Riverhawks was a really good idea to put on there.
All right, next slide, yeah. And then these are designs R&amp;R's made. These are like, these aren't like final designs, these are just rough drafts. And yeah, that's going to be, this is what's going to go into the Aquatic Center. Next slide.
Okay, how can we earn your support and make this a great community outreach? Do you guys have any questions or concerns that we're currently working on and planning on doing?
Have you thought about reaching out to some of the local photographers who do things like that of the valley itself? I mean, there's people that post on Facebook pretty regularly of pictures, right? The name?
Mary Waddell.
Yeah, Allen Day Adolf.
Quinn Calder.
Willie Hope.
Yeah, there's just a bunch of them and didn't know if you had reached out to any of them or?
We have not reached out to any, but we'd love to reach out if we could communicate like after the meeting with them, if you guys could give us some information about them. We totally love to. We think it's a great idea to have our community involved in this project.
Our seminary teacher.
Quinn Calder.
Quinn Calder, thank you.
Yes, yeah, and Mary Waddell.
So these designs were done by R&amp;R Partners?
Yep.
And that's who the grant is through? So they design all of the art and stuff.
I have kids in that age range and I love it. I was thinking, yeah, I probably want to have that conversation as often as I meet them. This would spark that conversation. So if I went to that parentsempowered.org, would that give me more information?
It would.
Okay, so this is a springboard to get them to dive into the information. I love that.
I think that.
It's not threatening, which I appreciate that, you know, when you read, it's a message, but then I love that the smaller message is apparent. I can read that and know like, hey, I shouldn't be asking those questions. The five W's are paying attention and makes me want to learn more. It's well done.
I do love it. It's very.
Have, have you looked at the effectiveness of campaigns like this? Did you look at that at all to say, when campaigns happen like this, there's an improvement of awareness or anything like that related to campaign or things like that?
So we have not looked at any information like that, but the Sharp Survey that we previously looked at and pulled information from, we're certain that when we put these designs out, since the Sharp Survey, five years later?
Every time, essentially.
Sorry.
But seriously, you're assuming they've this to the area.
We're giving it on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, this upcoming year, we will be taking the Sharp Survey again and we're hoping to compare the data to see if it's being effective.
And we can look when Parents Empowered started the campaign and compare that to, you know, what our alcohol rates are. We've done three other of these Parents Empowered installations. One was at Armando's Market, one was at Wasatch State Park, and then we did one at Heber Valley Railroad two years ago, I think. You know, we can kind of see how, we can pull out our own, you know, data from this area and see how, you know, it's affected if possibly.
Are you guys familiar with the Sharp Survey? Yeah? Would you, Jay, mind just explaining the Sharp Survey, just so he knows what that?
So the Sharp Survey is put together by a company called Bach Harrison in collaboration with Wasatch School District. I think that you, you know, there's input that is given from both of them. And then the students, sixth graders, is every other age six?
Eighth, 10th, 12th.
Yeah, 10th and 12th are all the ones who take it. And it's tailored to like the age that's taking it. Like the sixth graders don't get asked the same questions that the 12th grader gets asked. And they ask, you know, random questions that pertain to like risk and protective factors and like substance use, you know, like how often in the past 30 days have you used alcohol? You know, different substances. Then they ask some related to mental health because that's, you know, a big concern in, you know, the state and across the country right now. I'm trying to remember some of the others, you know, with them changing it, I'm not sure how it's changed.
But it is relevant data to our county that our kids are answering about substance abuse, mental health, suicide, questions.
And we would love for parents to check that out, you know? You know, sometimes we've had some pushback, you know, parents are like, we don't want, you know, you asking triggering questions to our kids. But Sharp is for our parents, for them to get information so that they know what to talk to their kids about. Because if, I think if sixth grade parents saw that their kids reported that they weren't talking to them about alcohol use, they would be like, I'm going to talk to my kids about alcohol use, so.
Is there something specific that we can do to help you guys? What can we, what can we do to help you and your project?
Yes, so we were hoping you guys could help us like social media wise and just spreading the word that this is something that's going to happen. I mean, we have the kickoff event that's hopefully coming up in May 3rd and we want it to blow up. We want everyone there. We want the whole community, we want them to see that this is a message that we have done and.
Are you going to have some sort of party?
The plans aren't like definite yet, but we are hoping to have a warm, cool day and bring the [BLEEP] out and do some rubbing, I mean ribbon cutting and just like do a tour beforehand before people go in and swim and look at the messaging and stuff.
We'd love to be invited to that.
Yes, we'd love to invite you. Once we have that finalized, we will send out invitations to you all.
Is there something specific you'd like us to share out as we should post on social media? Is there an invitation to that May 3rd activity or just post, what would you like us to post as we share?
There will be.
Okay.
And some of those things, we're waiting for the designs. Once we get some designs solidified, then we base like our social media campaigns and stuff off of that art to kind of make it, you know, maybe safe.
Do they, so are the banners or anything like that, all of that's already paid for through the grant?
Yes.
Yes, it's all paid for. It will all go on the south windows, so it'll just be on that south side. So we felt it would be, also they talked about, Naomi's a swimmer and, you know, as she watches, as they watch, there's going to be that whole background of our competitions and people are going to see these empowering. And so when they, when they did this, when they figured out what scene they wanted, they actually set this out and were very particular about our valley. And I thought it was an awesome representation of our valley and how these kids just brought it to our valley instead of just like, you know, they've done these in other communities where they are the only group of kids that have worked with R&amp;R. So the high school, I mean, the CAPS program, it's been pretty cool that they, they're like, we love it that the high school got involved and that they're bringing the community in. And so that has been really cool to see that R&amp;R's being very like, we'll do whatever you want. And so they planned all this and done all this, so, you know, and they wanted to make it positive and not a negative and just make it really so everyone who comes in can see and really have that conversation.
I know you guys are in the middle of this, but what, what has been the part that you've most enjoyed or is there something that you've kind of learned that's been like a aha moment for you in the project?
I, me personally, I love the world experience. Like I would, I would have never been here. Like I would, I would never have been here if it weren't for this project. I'd be sitting here meeting all of you. It's, it's like a really just an honor, like it's really, I'm like so appreciative to be here right now and just be working with my teammates.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kason, I'd like the Kason and Naomi chance to have a conversation as well.
So I have liked being able to work with a lot of people, like just work with a ton of people and get one idea done. Like I'd like, I've really enjoyed making the mood board and just helping R and R out.
Yeah, I just think it's definitely something that's out of my comfort zone. So it's, I mean, expand my comfort zone. Like, I don't know, rural experience.
Excellent.
Will these be up indefinitely? How long will the ad campaign run for?
So we actually hope, I don't know how long.
There's not like a definite time, but they can last a long time. They're really good quality and we hope that future CAPS will be able to like work on another project and change the, the costumes.
So the installations, they can stay up as long as, you know, Wasatch Aquatic Center wants to keep them up. The ones that are going in the stands, they're a type of material, kind of like a billboard, that you can change that out every so often. We thought that would be kind of fun, like future CAPS projects, they can create new media to go up there. It's, I forget what it's called, but it's kind of a fabric that they stretch over this thing that goes on there.
They put in the windows, they started this what, six or seven years ago, they said, and on the, on the Aquatic Center windows, and they're still up. Like they haven't had problems with them. So this can last for as long as we want to keep it up. So.
Let's try to see more and hear more from you.
Thank you so much again for this opportunity.
Thanks for being here, yeah, thanks for having us.
Thanks for your work to make Wasatch more healthy. I love this campaign. Well done, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye, I do.
Thank you, Stacey.
Okay, next, uh, we're gonna be in our classrooms.
I see.
Aren't you calling me as a chat, so I know.
I don't need words.
Thank you so much for just giving us a moment to just share. It honestly was just in the infancy stages and just really wanted to kind of share what we learned. And then we love any feedback that you guys have. We're gonna have a lot of time today, so it'll be pretty quick. We ended up visiting a model high school in Missouri and we went out with the intention to learn some obvious academic things that really led to then some really amazing how to connect with our students kind of things. This is on a very successful Blue Ribbon Model PLC High School. Well, while we were there and investigating, Stacy and I found on their district site, it was called Citizens in Our Schools. And it's, I gave you a little handout. You have it behind your agenda. And the objective is to really help connect and inform your community members and finding ways beyond just, you know, parents coming for parent teacher conferences or assemblies or whatever, or sporting events or activities. How else do we reach other community members who maybe don't have students in our schools? And the whole point is to build transparency and trust. And so I thought maybe I just read this top one here, they're website. It just says, the Citizens in Our Classrooms program offers an immersive experiential journey that gives participants a behind the scenes look at all aspects of school district operations and helps them become the ultimate informed citizens. The program begins with an interactive bus tour to all the campuses so that participants understand the area and history of our school district. And then subsequent sessions build on one another, providing a comprehensive understanding of the resources, people, and planning that it takes to operate one of the top school districts in the state. There, the way they set it up is a class that you apply for. It's about 25 to 30 individuals. And so you get a lot to apply and then you narrow it down based on area, on who you have come and be a part of this. And then they have them come for repeated sessions over like, you know, I think there's eight sessions on the back that they come for. And then in the end, there's like a graduation and they're considered very informed citizens of our county and partners with the school district. We've tossed around the idea of do we do that, but as well, formal ones on some topics that maybe you all would like us to share out, to be a part of, or our WPN, or our School and Community Council. Could we do a combo of both, have some that come consistently and then offer some additional informative? But the whole idea of it is to be very interactive, to have them be very participated in it. I've brought a video of one, it's a parent who is.
Would this be something we go like for the school year?
Yes. And we could decide however many, I think they do about one, I think they do one every month.
Yeah.
It is in, what was that? St. Louis area.
So they start one every month?
They have, they have the same people come, but it's different topics. And the topics, it's a cohort, is right here.
It's the same people every month?
And so that is how they do it. And so I thought. St. Charles, there you go. So I thought maybe you want to hear, this is just.
I have to say, I absolutely love the community that was formed here at Citizens in Our Schools. We came in here as a class of 20 something people, I mean, not really knowing each other. I sort of thought I would come in and it would be like a, like a traditional classroom, right, where I would sit down and I would get the knowledge and I would take that and I would use that. But what I found instead was I came in and had a cup of coffee with someone and got to know a little bit about their family, got to know how they're involved in the district, and it became so much more relational, which is what's the most important, to be honest. That to me was just encouraging and just very special when you look at this group. And we all had different opinions. We came from different backgrounds and we could have some of these conversations. This is what, this is what community should be like. We can maybe think a little differently, have different backgrounds, yet understand each other, gain a little bit of knowledge about each other's opportunities, and then come together to do something good for our district. I was just so impressed that every person here was really dedicated. And these are just citizens in our district, you know? And they're, they want to be part of something big here. And I think that was huge and it was just really inspiring to me to know that other people really care about education of the children in our community.
And so that's, that's an example from their school district. And we just thought, what an amazing opportunity to, I think they mentor us and help us with, give us some advice. But we thought maybe one of the first places we go to is our WPN parents, just because we have such involved families already in each of the schools. And maybe we start next fall with the one little piece of it, which is a school tour and a, you know, a county tour. And then also have an opportunity to bring in a representation from each of the schools and let them interact with these parents. And if we do it for brand new parents who are nearly new, maybe they've just moved in for the last couple of years or just this next fall, we thought maybe we'll start there as a little pilot just to see, does it have traction in our district? Or we find out maybe there is a need and our WPN parents think, let's go for this. Like let's do the real course where people graduate. But I miss.
I don't think so. I think this is a great opportunity, this time that we're. I love the idea that France has held to us, that it's really community driven. And we're, I feel like now is a good time to start listening a little bit more with the. It's going to be a fun program and I like the idea of pivoting with WPN first. I think they'll have a lot of good ideas and will take the board and feedback and it should be a great program.
With our growing community, I think it's super beneficial to just really reach out to the community that's growing.
Just have some pieces of surveys about what people want to know about.
I'm just curious, this district that was doing it, how long would you have the people on like the day you have them? You have them all day? You have them four hours?
They do. They have them for the full day and that's something we discussed. I did some of this stuff at Old Mill. We did it for dual immersion and then comprehensive math. We had, did parent tours and it was very, it's hard for someone to commit a full day nine times a year. So that's one of the things we kind of discussed. That's why we were wondering, do we have different topics? And then put out, you know, like parent teacher conferences, the signup genius. We just have, you know, 50 signup for the. Phase what they. Want to learn more about extracurricular, what are. So. Then that people. Here's that. Or do you do? That's. We. I love it. Back in. The. Trans. That. Will be. So. Their WPN would be a good place. Information and.
Transparency, partnership, not application. And I, I think that can be powerful. I guess, is there a funding piece? How did they fund their program? Is it minimal? Is that something that fits? Is it to start?
So I looked at what they did for the. Small. Them. Because the food. The. Them, they, they. The meal. We. Thing. Which. I just felt, I personally. To. For. A community. Who knows, maybe we send our. Back up, they could check who's interested.
So we'll be with the WPN April 8th. Just kind of introduce this with them and then, and then we'll make a plan. So. The council meeting. You're in.
Other questions or things to wonder about?
Did they say why they started it?
For to build partnership.
How long ago?
With their community. I'm not even sure. I didn't ask that yet. We just kind of wanted to see if there even an interest here and if there is an interest.
I think it's a really cool idea.
Then we'll dig in and ask them to partner with us.
Do you know how they picked the people, the group?
Well, it was an application process.
And they took how many?
They took between 25 and 30.
That's what they accepted.
Right, and it was from, from different areas in their district.
That's what I was gonna say. I think the selection process could be making sure you have a diverse group and that your different areas are represented, different interests are represented. But I, I really love this idea. I would be careful we don't whittle it down too much from, from the success that they've been having. We, we know that the folks that come and spend time in our district, they like it. They like what they see. They're amazed at some of the stuff that's going on, that we have a hard time pushing out, you know, in, in kind of PR increments to the, to the community. So you think about this over time, you have this small group of, of kind of school experts because they went through the program. And I'm sure there's ways we can kind of hang on to them as well after they've completed the course. And it's, it just sounds like a real authentic way to, to help our public relations in the community is to have these citizens out there that can speak firsthand about the district.
I agree.
And I'd love to see, as you dig in, Steph, as you, the data, what that school district says, like here's the impact we've seen, like here's, here's, is it fulfilling the purpose? I would love to see their data on, I mean, obviously it must be successful, they're still doing it, right? So.
Yeah, they offer it every year still. If that was a graduate from the 24.
Awesome. Come on, could you say?
Did I hear you say earlier, they have a waiting list?
Yeah, they don't take everybody. In the application process.
Has nothing on what their criteria is. It sounds a lot like Sandy City did a thing called Citizen Police Academy. Citizen type thing, but you go at hours once a week. It went for eight weeks. And your perspective of how the city ran its police department and the police officers and the role they had, you couldn't stay the same. Your awareness was dramatically elevated. And what that also did was gave you a place at a higher level within the police department. So anytime I wanted to go do a ride along or I wanted to be a part of a police event, you'd been to the Citizen Police Academy, so you got to be more involved in some way. Kind of a, then the reward to, for going through it. And then that obviously turned you into an even bigger advocate. So, but that's what they're creating, hopefully a bunch of advocates.
One of the board members yesterday in the presentation shared community within our community. And that really resonated with Stephanie Kees, the one I was talking about. That it's them telling our story, not, not the district trying to control the message. That seems really powerful.
And I love that it comes from the survey. I love that it's coming from like, we'll send out surveys, say, what do you want to know more about? And collecting that, and then that's where we could design, you know, what we, we present.
So that would inform your topic pick, not you wouldn't follow the same.
That's how, that's what informed their topics.
Okay, they did the surveys and then.
It would help us inform, but if, if this is something where we want to go, we definitely can reach out, find a partner and learn from their successes and their mistakes. So, and then we can report back more info.
I think it's worth investigating and looking into for sure. That's my personal, I like it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Great, well, Jurgen and we'll have dinner and come back to work.
I think dinner's across the hall. Go through the line and make your plate and then we'll head upstairs.
Good job.
Thanks.